Now, overall, when we're developing a preliminary operating budget, we're working with all the business areas to determine what's their critical needs to support the board's strategic plan. So as you're aware, we have three very large projects in our strategic plan. One is our Pension Solution Project, and that is our modernization of our Benefit Administration System, and that's found in Goal Number Two in the strategic plan. We have our Headquarters Expansion Project and our Associated Bond Financing, and that's to meet our long-term space needs, and that can be found in Goal Number Four. And we have our Investment Collaborative Model, which is managing more investments in-house, and that can be found in Goal Number One. So in addition to those very large projects we're taking on, we also have other initiatives in the strategic plan to support our operational goals. And some of those goals do represent increases to the budget that you'll see here related to supporting ongoing facilities maintenance, and that's in Goal Four, as well as enhancing technology capabilities in Goal Two. So with all of that in mind and what we're wanting to accomplish, if you could please turn to TRB 74. Now, please keep in mind these numbers are still preliminary, but as it stands right now, the total preliminary budget is projected at $663.8 million. Now, that's an increase of 15% over the prior year. Now, of this amount, the total operating budget, which excludes investment management fees, is projected at $361.7 million, or an increase of 25% over the prior year. Now, the next page on TRB 75, if you look towards the bottom of that page, these are the key budget changes. Now, out of that 25% increase, that is primarily attributable to the final $53 million that's required to fund the Pension Solution Project budget. Now, as you'll see on this summary, it actually says $47.2 million. That is a difference there that I'll explain in just a moment. But if you exclude that one-time $53 million cost, our operational growth percentage is 6% over the prior year. Now, that's compared to the prior-year budget where we had a 5% increase. Now, what makes up that organizational growth is a request for $14.2 million, and that is for non-discretionary costs. So that's some wage escalation for existing staff and prorata assessments from the state. We also have $5.4 million that we're requesting for additional expenditures, for contracts, technology, and audit services increases. And then we have a request for $4.5 million, and this is for workload capacity management. This is for 30 new authorized positions. Now, those positions would be spread across 10 business areas throughout the organization, and that's for increased workload demands, as well as some of those positions will assist in the implementation of the collaborative model. And so in a few moments, Art will provide us with some more details related to that organizational growth request. And then you'll have two more items that you'll see in the budget. We have a request for a resource drawdown for five investment staff. Now, that's to close out the multi-year investment management BCP. And then we have a technical reclass that does not require any funding, and David will provide us with additional detail for those two items. So that's kind of a high overview of what's in the preliminary budget we have so far. So if you could please turn to TRB 76. So as I mentioned, the largest increase in the overall operating budget is the $53 million requested for the Pension Solution Project budget. So as a reminder, in July, the board has already approved that total project budget in the amount of $304.8. So the $53 million gets us to fund the rest that we need to get us to the $304.8. So we did add that $53 million in the operating budget. But what happened is in the prior-year budget, we had already budgeted for $5.8 million that we did receive for funding for Pension Solution. So from an operating budget perspective, it's only a net increase. We decreased the budget by the $5.8 million that we won't receive in 2021, and then added in the $53 million that we need to fund the budget. So the net of that is the $47.2, so that's why that's the difference. So because there is a difference there, I wanted to just kind of pause there if anyone had any questions on the Pension Solution request. No?
The budget has been adjusted.
Yes, nothing's changed. Yeah. Okay, so now Art will provide us with additional details on the organizational growth request.
All right, so I'm going to touch upon the changes for the organizational growth. It's primarily driven by the key resource needs within the organization, and it totals $24.1 million. So if you look at the chart on TRB 77, it provides a nice breakout for what those costs are going towards. As Julie mentioned, it's covering state mandates, service contracts, and workload capacity management. And as you'll note, state mandates make up the majority of the cost of $14.2 million. And so state mandates are really what we've defined, they're really sort of non-discretionary costs, meaning that we have very little control over what those are. And so if you look at the main increases, the main item that's driving the increase in that, it's going to be the wage and salary increases, salary and benefit increases. And so when you look at the non-investment staff, those salaries are determined through collective bargaining that's completed through the state, through the administration. And so we have very little input or involvement in that process. And so for projection purposes, for building the budget, we used a 4% projection of what we thought the salary increases were going to be for the 2021 fiscal year. As it turns out, the state has completed its collective bargaining negotiations and arrived at a slightly different rate. So the rate they have for the 2021 fiscal year is 2.5%, and then they have some health benefit offsets also that are factored in there. So we're going to have to go back and evaluate what this does to the budget, you know, we'll evaluate the impacts to it, and then when we come back to you in November with the final budget, we'll incorporate into that any changes that need to be made in light of this. In addition to that, within the salary escalation, wage escalation amount, we also include increases for the incentives and investment staff salaries that the board just recently approved. And finally, in that amount, we also include an estimate, an increase for our contributions to pre-fund the state's OPIT plan. It's a 1.2% increase in the OPIT plan's other post-employment benefits. So moving on to prorata. So the prorata assessment we're estimating is going to increase by about $551,000 over the previous fiscal year. And for those of you that aren't familiar with prorata, these are really, they're the state's centralized administrative costs that it allocates or distributes back to state agencies. So for us, it's really, you could look at it as sort of an indirect cost that's being charged back to us from the state of California. So the amount that we have here right now is an estimate. We're still waiting to receive the final amounts from the Department of Finance. So to give you an example of what one of these might be, so the state Controller's Office payroll expenses, the cost for them to process state payroll, those costs get distributed and allocated back to the state agencies. Another example would be the retiree healthcare costs, and those are handled on a pay-as-you-go basis. Those are also distributed back to state agencies as well, and those are all factored within the prorata assessment. So next, we move on to service contracts, and the increase there, we're asking for an additional $5.4 million. And there's two drivers, two primary drivers for that. One is increase in property management costs, and the other one is increase in service contract costs associated with technology services. And so recently, we renegotiated or negotiated a new agreement with JLL. It's a 10-year contract for $108 million. The board approved that contract, and there is increases in that contract over the previous one, and those are primarily go to address increase in management fees, increase in operating costs for the existing building, and also cover increases in repaired maintenance of the existing building. For the technology services, there's a number of different pieces that comprise this amount. They cover items such as software licenses, increases in costs around software licenses, around data management. They also cover costs associated with new software applications that we'd be purchasing for the ISO for information security purposes. So if I move on to the third component for organizational growth, it's the workload capacity management, and this is probably the core of our request, and this is really our staffing request. And so in this item, we're looking at, we're requesting 30 new positions, 30 authorized positions, and the dollar amount for that is $4.5 million. And so as Julie mentioned, these positions go to cover a number of different areas that are going to be distributed across the organization. And so if you take a look at TRB 80, the chart there provides a nice depiction in terms of how those are going to be distributed across the organization. And I think one thing that you'll know is that three of the positions are for CIS, which is within the investment branch, and the rest of them are primarily distributed across, really, the administrative support functions within CalSTRS, and we'll touch upon that in a little bit. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the CIS positions and provide some clarity as to why we wouldn't include those positions within the technical adjustment that Dave is going to be talking about in a minute. And the reason for that is even though the CIS positions are within the investment branch, this budget is within the investment branch budget, it's funded out of what's called a continuous appropriation, so the board has the authority over that budget. So if the investment branch wanted to add additional resources to CIS, it could come to the board for approval of that, and when the board approves it, the augmentation in the budget would be finalized. It doesn't have to go to, through, it doesn't have to be included in a BCP that we submit to the Department of Finance or the legislature for review and consideration. It's something that can be brought to the board at any time during the fiscal year. It doesn't fall within, necessarily have to fall within the regular budget cycle. So the multi-year BCP that Dave talked about in May, which we drew down some positions early on that, and he's going to be talking about in a little bit, really that was to facilitate and provide us some additional flexibility in terms of how we manage the other portion of the investment branch's operating budget, not the portion, not the external investment advisor budget, but really their internal operating costs. Those are primarily really funded out of, or those are funded out of the annual support appropriation. And because that follows the normal budget cycle, an annual budget cycle, not only does it have to go to you for review approval, but it also has to be generally incorporated into a BCP that would go to the Department of Finance and then the legislature again for consideration and review. And so we worked with the Department of Finance several years ago to develop this multi-year BCP concept to give us a little bit more flexibility on that other piece of the investment budget, so that we could bring on resources, you know, when we need them, and not necessarily have to wait for each individual fiscal year to do that. So that's the reason why these CIS positions haven't been included in the early drawdown or the five-year BCP is because you already have the flexibility to bring on the resources in there, and so they didn't need to be incorporated into that new tool. So I'll pause there to see if there's any questions. Matt? Okay, good. Sure.
So within the section, there were some that we kind of skipped, I guess. So I had some, and maybe it's because they were low-dollar.
You know what, yeah. So what I did is I tried to focus on the primary ones.
I just have a couple of questions on them. So the first question might be to Julie. When we're talking about the blanket positions, are we going to fill, how, what's the plan to fill those? Are those with like temporary services or?
Yes, they're temporary services, so they're not officially funded long-term. We're funding them right now with salary savings, and there's someone is already in that position performing those duties. And so that person would continue performing those duties, we would just move them from the blanket position into the authorized position.
I guess I'm just asking, where is it that we go for the, do we hire them temporarily, or do we go to a temp service and ask the temp service to provide as employees?
No, it's not a temp service.
Okay, so we're just hiring them temporarily?
Well, it's not.
They're full-time permanent employees.
Yes.
Got it.
Funded from salary savings.
Got it. That's what the blanket, that's what the blanket position is.
Yeah, if you were to eliminate the position, the employee would still have employment rights and everything, these are full-time CalSTRS employees. Correct?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that helps. And then when we're talking about the, no, that's wrong. When we're talking about the external audit services to audit the investment portfolio, it's a $380,000 contract, is that to a singular auditor or firm? Is that what the contract would eventually be, or how does that, is that for only one year?
It's my understanding that it's not for a single service, it's like a pool of auditors that they use to audit different investment strategies. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And that, those can be in, but it's for an external auditing service, right?
Yes.
So that would be with different auditing firms?
Yes.
Got it, thank you. All right.
So the thing I would add with that amount is that it's a permanent augmentation to our budget, so we're actually looking at, it's not just for one year, it's, we're seeking permanent augmentation to our budget to accommodate the growth that's been in that area with regards to those types of audits.
And then my last question is, where are we going to put these people? We're already crammed. Where, I mean, it's like, holy cow.
Yeah.
Wasn't rhetorical, but not necessarily facetious. All right, that's it for me.
Okay. Were there any other questions? Okay, so really, the core objective, or primary core objective of this request is really, again, if you're looking at the positions, the majority of the positions are really within our administrative support functions at CalSTRS. And so what we've found over the last several years is that the core business areas have grown substantially. So if you look at the investment branch and the benefit and services branch over the last several years, they've grown by approximately 21%. And if you look at the rest of the administrative services, it's grown by approximately 4%. And so what's happening is that we have sort of a capacity gap right now, where, you know, the administrative support functions aren't able to keep up with the workload that needs to be accomplished to support those business areas. And so there's, it's putting quite a strain on our administrative support functions to try and address, you know, all the needs that we have for the, for an office work that needs to be done by the core, you know, benefits and services and investment brands. So I would draw your attention to TRB 81, and I think this does a nice job of sort of displaying what's occurring here. And we call this the circle of life. And so really, what we have, if you look at it, is there's an overarching strategic plan that's really setting the goals and objectives of the organization. If you look to the left, we have really some of the key drivers right now that are, you know, driving a lot of change within organizations. We have an increase in assets under management. We have the continued implementation of the collaborative model. And then we also have some slight growth within the membership, and that membership, it's changing in demographics from going from a more active membership to a larger retiree population. And to address all those changes that are occurring right now, it's putting pressure on the investment branch and benefit and services, and so those areas have had to grow to accommodate those changes and that growth. And then what happens there is that then you have an impact that's put on the rest of the organization, on the administrative support functions that need to do work to also support that. And so we have, I guess, what I would call sort of a trickle-down effect. And so as you can see, it's causing some constraint issues within the administrative support functions to support those areas. And then on top of that, I think when you look at the growth, there's also, you have to layer that on, you also have to layer on top of that the complexity of the organization and the sophistication. So I think as we've grown, we've become more complex and more sophisticated, and that adds additional, that adds an additional need within the administrative functions at CalSTRS to support that. So what I'd like to do now is turn your attention to TRB 87. I think that's it. So TRB 87, what we wanted to accomplish here was, we wanted to provide you some information with regards to the different type of positions that we're requesting. So in this appendix, we have a summary of the, we have a listing of the classifications by each business area, and we also have a summary of what each position would be doing. Now, this is a summary, it doesn't provide a detailed description for each position. We also didn't include detailed metrics, sort of justifying the need for each position. We were, wanted just to provide you a glimpse and understanding of what they would be performing, and really just focus more on the, you know, the macro events that are occurring that are driving the need for these positions. The other reason we didn't include detailed metrics is that if we did for each position, it would be a lot of information and be very voluminous. Sure.
Just one question. We've talked about the collaborative model and how we can reduce our costs, and my question is, with the collaborative model and some of the efforts that we're looking at, do we use in-house counsel to negotiate the agreements that we have, or do we go to outside counsel? And?
I think I would defer to Brian on that one.
Yeah.
So we actually use a combination of both. We use outside counsel for their expertise in doing these transactions, but our inside counsel, people like Jennifer provide oversight, make sure it fits within the policy in the way that we normally do that. But if we were to do these transactions, our ask would be for about 25 more lawyers.
I'm sorry?
Our ask would be for about 25 more lawyers if we tried to do these in-house.
Well, that's what I thought, and especially since I just went to the Office of the General Counsel. So I assumed that, but, and how is that built into the budget?
Well, the legal counsel for the investments are, that's continuously appropriated, that's part of the investment process. And then we have separate investment counsel within the legal office that work with the investment branch.
Thank you.
And so just to follow up on that again, so that's part of our yearly process that we go through with the business areas to see what are their needs and what do we need to include in the next budget cycle to support those types of initiatives.
Thank you.
So with this appendix, with the listing of these positions, we have some information we can provide you that provides a summary of what the positions would be doing at the branch level. We can provide that information to you if you'd like, or if you've had an opportunity to read these and you're okay with it.
Can't hear you. I couldn't hear you.
Well, I just, he just said I can provide more information, and I think they've had a decent explanation of each of the, each of the positions in the write-up, and I was just joking that we've prepared, we read ahead, because we read our material, so.
All right, so the other thing I'd like to add is that when you look at these 30 positions, it's really a 3% growth over the prior fiscal year with regards to staffing, and we feel pretty comfortable with that number. It's right in line with the, we feel it's right in line with the projections that we provided to the board and to the legislature with regards to what we thought the staffing growth was going to be in the organization to support the Headquarters Expansion Project. In those projections, we stated that we thought it'd be about 4.5% over the next 10 years, and then it would drop off to 2.5% after that. So the 3%, you know, it's actually a little bit lower than the 4.5%, but, you know, generally we feel that's sort of in line, because we would expect in some years it might be a little bit lower, and in other years it might be a little bit higher. So that's another data point that gives us some comfort with regards to our request. And so I'd like to just sort of finish by saying that, you know, if you look at the request, the majority of the positions we're asking for are really go to support the administrative functions within CalSTRS. There are about eight positions that are going to support either directly or indirectly, or eight positions within this request that are either going to directly or indirectly support the implementation of the collaborative model. There's three positions within CIS, and then there's a number of positions within the rest of the business areas. And so I just want to make it known that, you know, even though we have some references to the implementation of the collaborative model and resources here, that the organization's still going through an overall analysis to determine the impacts of the implementation of that on the CalSTRS administrative functions. And so we would expect at some point that we possibly be coming back for additional resources to continue to support that going forward.
I'm sorry?
So with that, I'll ask you if you have any questions?
Any questions from committee members? I don't see any. It's an information item, so.
Okay.
We'll be back in November.
We'll see it in November. So will it take action in November?
Yes, it'll be an action item.
It's sort of the governor's budget.
Got it, okay.
It's a good time for the governor's form.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Art, David.
So I'll turn it over to Dave now. Dave's going to talk a little bit more about the technical adjustments that we're going to have.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, David Munoz, CalSTRS staff. So the next two components and the final components of the preliminary operating budget, I would just start by saying these are technical adjustments that will not have any impact to the funding request or the level of staff within the organization. So I'll get started with the Internal Investment Management Resource Drawdown. Now, this is something that the board has seen a few times before, but just for a little bit of context and background, especially for the new board members, I would just give you a little bit of history. So in November of 2017, the board approved 58 positions and $15.4 million as part of the 2018-19 operating budget. And this proposal was known as the Internal Investment Management Multi-Year BCP. A provision of that particular proposal allowed that the, those resources would not be provided to staff all in one year, rather they would have a five-year time horizon in which we could draw on those. And that schedule was laid out in that particular proposal, but another provision of that BCP was that it allowed the board the authority to adjust that schedule to the extent that, you know, investment markets or investment strategies had required the drawdown of those resources earlier than originally intended. So moving forward, at the May 2019 meeting, the board actually utilized that authority to revise the actual original schedule, and they approved the drawdown of 15 additional investment resources as part of the 1920 year, so the current year that we're in right now. And as part of that meeting, staff also provided a forecast for investment staffing needs into the 2021 year, which is the year that we're talking about right now. And I think the best way to see that is visually, and if you were to look at TRB 85, you could see that the board had an original schedule for these resources, and then they had subsequently revised that as well. So you can see it really condensed from a five-year plan to what is now a three-year So in summary, I would say for this particular proposal, it's requesting access to five additional investment staff resources and $1.6 million of previously-approved budget authority for the 2021 year. The need for these positions is again directly related to the continued implementation of the collaborative model. And I would also note that this, when it does become an action, this will have exhausted the entire original proposal. So the takeaway is, is that we would have to be considering another proposal at some point in the following year, to the extent that we, you know, continue staffing investments at the rate that we have. I would also like to note, I think it's important, that the multi-year BCP approach was somewhat of an experiment for CalSTRS, only because state budgeting doesn't really operate on a multi-year time horizon in the, in sort of the, sort of the world that you would experience in a private sector, and that we worked very closely with our partners at Department of Finance, and I would say that in discussions, that we felt that this progressive budgeting, you know, sort of practice worked well definitely on our part, and I think there's some agreement from the administration as well. So as we continue to look at the needs of the organization, we would look toward these multi-year strategies again at some point. So I'm going to pause there for a moment and see if there's any questions about the resource drawdown.
Thank you. No, I think a lot of this will be part of the regular budget process, but did I understand that only eight of all of these positions you're requesting are related to the collaborative model?
Out of the 30?
30 are related.
No, I'm sorry, out of the 30 requests, yes, eight.
Okay. And are any of the others associated with the cost savings at CalSTRS, or just the?
The rest are for increased workload demand.
Okay.
Just in general, to support the overall growth in the investment and benefits branches.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. So to the final technical adjustment, this is a reclassification of existing position authority. And again, the proposal before you is technical, this is a technical re-categorization of 48 existing positions pursuant to a statewide budgeting exercise known as Budget Position Transparency. This is being administered statewide by the Department of Finance, and we are participating in this process concurrently. I would just offer in the beginning that the spirit of this exercise is really to better align budgetary reporting with the actual operations of an organization, and as part of that, this budgetary exercise requires an evaluation of how positions within the organization are categorized for statewide reporting as defined by the administration. So I would, I would say that in completing this budgetary exercise, CalSTRS performed an enterprise-wide evaluation of all of our positions and identified that we have 48 positions requiring a re-categorization into what is defined as a regular ongoing position. And it's important to highlight that this proposal does not change existing staffing levels or impact the existing budget at all, rather it simply technically moves, it shifts the reporting of positions from one line to another.
Let's get that view up. We don't need that camera view.
I thought he was saying he didn't like what Dua was saying.
No, it's no problem. Yeah. So so just in sort of closing, I would I would I would offer that staff provides the board significant transparency into all of our positions within the organization. As you're as you're aware, the final budget that we proposed to you in November will, in addition to giving you total positions, it breaks it out by branch as well. And you're also aware that we produce a budget publication pursuant to the GFOA guidelines that also breaks out positions in a number of different fashions, just to give you that added transparency with regards to how we're staffing the the business. So that concludes my prepared comments. Be happy to answer any questions about that.
Any additional questions from committee members? I would just say Harry and I met with Julie and her team a few days ago just to kind of do a budget one-on-one overview, and I commend any board member who just wants to learn more or ask questions before we take action in November to ask for that. It was really insightful. I think, you know, just to dig a little deeper on our budget was really helpful, so I really appreciate the work your team's doing and look forward to seeing you back in November.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. Okay. And just a reminder, item six is going to be at the end, so we're going to go on to state and federal legislation. Grant and Joyce Lynn. We have 15 minutes allocated for this item. Just so you know, we're kind of aiming towards, we've got this and a CEO report and a couple of consent items. And then the idea is to hopefully break for lunch around, you know, 12:30, 12:15, 12:30-ish. That's the idea. So Danielle, if you're listening. All right. Hi, Grant, Joyce Lynn.
Good morning again.
Morning.
And I'm Grant Boykin, Public Affairs, and I will turn it over to Joyce Lynn.
Yes, Joyce Lynn Martinez Way, Director of Governmental Relations. Wanted to give you an update today on the bills that we've been following. It is the last two weeks of the legislative session, so they have one more week left next week, and it's super busy over there. They're dealing with a lot of different issues. Most of them aren't relating to CalSTRS at this point in time. But I wanted to walk through the matrix that starts on TRB 94 and give you some updates since the last board meeting, and also there are some updates to what is included in the printed item that's in front of you. So I wanted to start with AB 181 related to the Emerging Manager Report. And that bill was actually amended significantly just yesterday or the day before, and it's what we refer to lovingly as a gut and amend. So it entirely changed topics and authors. So it now has to do with hazardous waste and cost reimbursement, and it's by.
I didn't know that this was going to be charged authors.
Yes, now it's by Assemblymember Mainshine. And basically, probably what happened, and this is common at the end of session, is that somebody had an immediate need. They needed a vehicle to have a policy move through quickly at the end of session, and it seems like Assemblymember Rodriguez obliged and volunteered this bill, which was slated to be a two-year bill. As you could see, it was sitting in Senate Rules Committee. It wasn't going to move this year without rule waivers. And so this now is not a bill that deals with anything that CalSTRS has to do with. So we'll remove that for our list for the records. Any questions on that? Fun process. Excellent. AB 462 actually has the language that reflects AB 181, also Emerging Manager Report. I updated you on that last time. It still contains that language. As you can see, it's in Senate Rules Committee. It is a two-year bill. It's slated to be a vehicle for any charter school legislation that might come up about mandating charter schools into CalSTRS or CalPERS. So those discussions continue amongst the education community. So there's no final idea yet on what should go into a bill like that. So it remains available for that purpose, and we'll see how it changes next year.
This is the first year of the two-year session?
Correct. Right. So any bills that are in the Second House are in a good space to move on next year. Actually, for the first few weeks, basically the first month of the second year, any bill that's in a policy committee can in the House of Origin can move forward, but there's a pretty quick House of Origin deadline for two-year bills that were still in the House of Origin. So this one's in a good space since it's on the Senate side. AB 644, one of our sponsored bills, actually has been signed. It was signed essentially the day, the day, I think, we met last last time in July. So it was good timing for us just to get it, you know, out of the way, if you will, and we know we can move forward with implementing, but I didn't get to update you on that. So that's good news. Moving on to, oh, that is on TRB 95, but right below, AB 706, back-sponsored bill. That also got signed the same day as our sponsored AB 644. So and that one, we are making staff aware of, but there's not really anything for us to implement, but the awareness is being spread throughout the organization for folks who who look at sick leave service credit when it comes in to be converted to sick leave gets converted to service credit. Okay. And a couple of updates from the document you have in front of you. AB 1320 was on the suspense file last Friday. They had those hearings. That bill did move off the suspense file and moved forward to the Senate floor. There were some minor technical amendments to it, so nothing that that changes the content really. And we will see if that moves to the governor's desk in the next week. I anticipate that it will, and I don't know exactly where the governor will go. It's on the Senate floor. It will go back to the Assembly for concurrence and Senate amendments, and then would move on to the governor's desk if it gets the votes it needs.
Interesting.
And then AB 1452, our other sponsored bill, really a housekeeping bill on membership thresholds in our law and other things related to membership. That was also on the suspense file and did move off, which is great news, and it moved to the Senate floor. It's on a consent calendar, so it'll be taken up with other items that have no opposition and no-no votes in their history as they've moved through the process. So that and and that bill was not amended on the Senate side, so it'll go straight to the governor's desk after a floor vote. And then SJR 3, I think we may have known last time, but that moved through both houses of the legislature and has been chaptered. So that's that is done on the weapon GPO appeal.
Joyce, I do have a question real quick.
Sure.
Betty?
Thanks, Sharon. Sorry. So I lost track, but we had had a discussion, I think, last year about trying to look at putting a provision into legislation about safeguarding charter school pension contributions and this related to the Alameda County Office of Education issue that came forth. So is that anywhere or are we still pursuing that?
That is not in any legislation. That is also included in kind of the discussions around the mandate for CalSTRS and CalPERS. So that's still being talked about.
So I kind of distinguish that a little bit differently because these are existing charter schools, and I feel like, why are we allowing kind of the county offices to carry that load when it's not really rightfully theirs? So can we make a delineation of that and try to put it in a bill separately? Or, I mean, who's making that determination that it's kind of lumped into all the charter school issues?
It's how the conversation has evolved amongst the education community. And so I think they are two separate issues, correct? They were being talked about potentially going into two separate vehicles. The piece that you're talking about right now with the county offices of education and contributions from charter schools didn't end up in a separate vehicle. So then I think it kind of got put together with the mandate issue. And again, that since there haven't been final decisions on how to approach that amongst the community, it also hasn't gone into a bill.
So I'm going to make a suggestion here. I would like to see us sponsor that bill and take a more proactive stance on it. I have no idea what the outcome of all these charter school issues will be, but we've got to protect kind of our turf here. So I would really like to have us pursue sponsoring a bill in that regard. And then if it gets in the mix, it's in the mix, but at least it's somewhere and moving along.
So we'll have to do a lot of pre-work with the different stakeholders.
Won't be this session, obviously. So look at January and introduce the bill because I.
And we will have to look at the how we can time those conversations with stakeholders because there will be a lot of those.
So are we part of the stakeholder meetings with the charter school?
We're being involved, yes.
Okay. I just feel like it's always kind of this one-off, and we never kind of deal with it. But I.
You're talking about resolving the issue, like the Alameda case that we saw with not having the the counties being on the hook for the contribution.
Yeah, yeah, it was going to.
For charter schools.
Sure, the establishment of escrow account and to make the final contribution. And, you know, I mean, to the extent that some of the charter schools are going bankrupt or having financial distress, at least, you know, kind of our interest is protected.
I'm just thinking.
And I get such sensitivity. I get it. I mean, I got CTA that wants to kind of orchestrate all the charter school things. I get it. And I want to be respectful of the educational community in terms of deliberations on those provisions, but this one, to me, just seems so front and center to us that we ought to be sponsoring legislation. And if it gets swept up as part of the bigger conversation, great, but I don't want to keep losing it. And then every year, we kind of hear that, you know, maybe the problem exacerbates, but I just thought that we should take care of that.
Is that, I mean, I guess I want to just check in with the rest of the board because Betty's making us, you know, a suggestion for us to take some kind of action.
Yeah, and we can bring it back and consider it.
I think that's something that we should. Do you want to jump in with that? Okay. I thought you were talking about something else.
I am. I was, but I'll address that.
Okay, go ahead. Yep, Dana.
It's when the whole Alameda County thing came up, I had some really strong feelings about going after an entity that might not have anything to do with the approval of a charter. But then in talking with staff and then understanding how finances flow to schools, it kind of, for me, it makes sense that it's the county office. And there is some unfairness about it, but if the county office is the entity that monies flow through, then they have control of a district's money or a charter's money. And and I think what ended up happening with Alameda was they actually had money to make those contributions that they were holding that belonged to the charter school. So it wasn't that we took money from Alameda County. So I agree, getting something that really strengthens our stance in that, but I don't, finding out who should be on the hook for it, I think, will be a dance.
I think in the issue of Alameda County, they ought to be like pre-meeting the topic of the money they have.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I just want us to be really careful that we get that we're able to get our money from the best source, however we make that.
The appropriate source.
The appropriate source.
Joyce, and is it just to Betty's request, is it possible for you to do a little research and come back? And I'd love, because I appreciate what you're proposing, and I guess I just don't feel comfortable making a decision right now since we're.
No, no, and I'm not suggesting we are. And I think for the purpose of the new members of the board, maybe bring the issue back in terms of just kind of the background so that then we can decide fresh about.
Give some context. Because some people aren't here with Alameda, so it'd be helpful to give some context to new board members, and then we can certainly consider Betty's request.
Sure. Well, I think we all agree, that was a mess, and that was our first dry run with it and solvency.
Yeah.
And the level of resources we applied to that situation from Julie's branch were enormous.
It's huge.
Enormous, as well as the Controller's Office as well, which was involved. So it's we're not happy where we are, for sure. The politics are another part of the story.
My other comments.
Joyce, do you have more comments?
I do, yes.
Okay, let me, if it's okay with.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay. You have to turn back and give it in.
I, you know, just as a new member, on that particular item, I really endorse what you've said because I'm in the dark. I'm truly in the dark, and I understand, I think I understand the goal, but I just have no background.
Yeah, we should.
Thanks. You may like that decision after we tell you what happened.
You might want to stay ignorance is bliss. Is that what they have to say? Ignorance is bliss? No, we will make sure we do that.
It's complicated.
Thank you. Like so many relationships, it's complicated. Go ahead, Miss Dana.
I thought Joyce Lynn had more.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to mention that we're definitely involved in the conversation, so those will continue. Just timing-wise, we're already working on potential proposals for 2020, so we've been having conversations with stakeholders on the proposals that we're looking at. We're going to executive staff to see what they want to move forward with at the end of the month, and so it's potential that we could make something in with those ongoing conversations, but we just haven't prepared for rolling it into what we may sponsor, but we've involved in the other conversations in the education community. So we can do our best to navigate that.
Okay, I'm I'm I will do whatever I can to help you.
Thank you.
Yep, good. Anything else, Joyce Lynn?
And just on the federal legislation, no updates there. And then, like I just mentioned, we'll be back in November, potentially with substantive proposals to see if the board would like to sponsor them.
All right, so Dana.
So seeing as I'm the person that asked for it, Joyce Lynn, I really appreciate getting the email, and even though it was 47 pages or whatever, I did print it out. I am going to go through these. I have a question, how you receive this information? Is this through a service? I think CTA has a service. So when this comes to you, this is the format that it's in?
It is.
So any of us that get this are able to take a look at it, and if we have questions, we can ask why we're taking a look at it. And then if we think it's worth the rest of the board knowing that, we can ask to have that done in the next report or whatever. I don't want to necessarily add one sentence to this report that says, this is the reason why we're watching it.
Right.
But there might be some of us that are interested in some of these about why we are watching it.
Sure.
And then if we think it's important enough, then you can bring it forward to the board.
Sure.
Would you speak to you individually about it?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Because there's some things in here that make me wonder why we're watching it, but then there's some in here that are going, wow, I'm thinking, maybe we should have talked about that. So I appreciate getting this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we we thought about the best format to provide that, and we couldn't, we thought at least the first time, we'll go big and.
Getting it like this is fine, and then it's on us.
Yeah.
Yep.
This will be part of my reading on the flight, if my iPad goes out on me.
Wow.
I put that caveat in there.
I'm reading that right.
Happy to oblige on that.
Maybe you're a little more. Anything else, Karen, Joyce Lynn? We're all set? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
This goes to everybody, right?
Grant sent it out as well, yes.
Thank you. Lots of emails.
Came from you?
Lots of emails. Grant sent it out.
Yeah.
Recently.
A month ago or so.
Was it last week?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was in August or late July. I could go back and.
Are there any members from the public that want to speak on item seven? Seeing none? Okay, thanks, you guys. All right, Jack, CEO report.
Couple of things. I thought I would just update you on the first item in the report, what's happened since we wrote the report on the headquarters expansion project. We brought in a jackhammer and saw this morning so that you would know that we really are, we really are doing this project, but they're going to start up at 2:00 again today, but they're punching a hole through the side of the garage so that we can shut the other entrance and and start working on the surface lot. So, you know, again, the wall behind you is actually connected to the parking garage. So when we built this building, we were always quite aware that we needed some sound insulation from that garage, just for cars and motorcycles and things. But, you know, for the next two and a half years, we're going to have some noise out there in the lot, for sure, so get ready for that. On the second page of the report, the good news is we are getting very close now to getting the guaranteed maximum price on the project, obviously one of the most critical budgetary milestones we face on the project. And I have to tell you, it's hard to even say this about construction, but right now we don't have any really budget unexpected budgetary pressures, so we're heading toward the the GMP as as we might have expected. This is going better than a home kitchen remodel at this point. So I don't know if I'll say that in a month, but I think you all know the pain of home kitchen remodels, so I wanted you to appreciate that. But right now, truly, our advisors, the bids are coming in as we expected. The cement bill bid was the most critical, so that feels good to us. On the third page, we referenced the I-Bank meeting on August 28th. That's taken place, of course, and it was unanimous approval. So we are moving ahead with no problems on the bond front. On the next page, I we referenced the green bond framework that's been put together because this is a green bond issue. And we shared the first draft of that document with Harry and Sharon just a day ago, and I'd like you all to see it when we get in final form. Most, you know, we referenced green bonds in the investment committee, and you see reference to them in the news, but I think you'd find this interesting, this document, which actually structures the framework for the issuing that we're doing here and how we talk about the green bond and why it qualifies as a green bond and how we provide that assurance to the public that this is a truly sustainable activity. So I think it's a good thing for all of us to kind of see how this green bond market works, so I'm going to share that with you when we get that in final form. And then the second item we featured here is long, I know the attachment, but, you know, we always, twice a year, Julie and her staff share with you our risk management report that we do internally, but we've never really shown you how that gets translated for Department of Finance into how we affectionately call it the SLA report, and its complications. So we wanted you to see that risk, how it gets translated to a public state document, and Julie's staff monitors that and produces that on a regular basis for all of you, so for the state, Department of Finance. And then lastly, I just want to share you two, really, I love data, as you know, and we are working, we've talked with you about the surveys we're doing with our members, most importantly, about communications, and how to, again, face the challenges, how do we get people that are under 50 years old interested in retirement and think about retirement? And again, our statistics here around workshops and counseling are amazing, the number of appointments we do, but we're not anywhere we want to be with people under 50. It is still by far, 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 people over 50, they're talking to us, coming in, and as you know, in life, the opportunity for course correction gets a little slim. So we have two surveys we're doing. One is what we call the demographic survey, and the other was on messaging. I just want to show you one slide from each, kind of like a data teaser, because Elisa will come in with you and really give you the results of the full surveys here shortly, but Dana and others have asked about these surveys and kind of what's coming out of them, so I thought I'd share two slides with you. This first one's out of the messaging slide, so this was with active teachers, and this is just the timeline of doing them. Rather than just sending out a survey to teachers, we really started with focus groups to get some general concepts around messaging. And again, our goal here is to have more engaged and relevant communications for our members that are under 49, find out what resonates with them, what gets them thinking about retirement. And so in issuing this survey, we asked them to evaluate various phrases around believability, relevance to their financial future, their fit with their perception of CalSTRS, and the likelihood that it would cause them to take action. So I'm going to read you the four phrases that were tested in this marketing around this messaging, then I'll show you what the winner was, how teachers overwhelmingly chose one of these, and I bet you can guess which one it was. So one of the message was, these are marketing messages, so again, bear with me, already planning your next vacation or saving for an early retirement, learn simple strategies so you can do more of the things you love.
You're saving for the vacation.
Next one, saving for down payment on your dream home or focusing on paying down debt. Learn financial strategies to live your best life at every stage of your career. Next one, planning to start a family, paying for your children's college education, we can help you learn financial basics for every step in your career. Last one, you're helping students build their futures, don't forget about yours. We can help you plan for your financial future.
Oh, I like that one. Self-care. Take care of yourselves. Awesome. I like that.
Overwhelmingly, on every indicator of what I said before, believability, relevance, fit with perception of CalSTRS, and likelihood to take action, this was across all age deciles, this phrase resonated most with our members. Interesting, huh? So we'll build this with you, and I wanted to just kind of get a feel of things we're probing and how ultimately we can shape more strategic communications with our members, particularly this under-50 group. And the next slide, I love, it's the most basic question of all for teachers, and this comes out of the demographic study, which is, why are you a teacher? Take a look at this. Very different than other jobs.
Yeah, totally.
I want you to think, overwhelmingly, one answer here, right? To make a difference. To make a difference. Think about, now think of other professions and who would answer those. Now, there are some professions that would speak out of it, but not a lot...
Why is there no category about money? About the money? We're in it for the money. We're here to make the big bucks.
So isn't that interesting? Number one, make a difference. Second answer is inspired by a teacher, and third, give back.
Awesome. Best job ever.
Pretty good, huh? I thought you'd like to see that, and this is the kind of stuff that we're probing. It'll help us be smarter about how we talk, message, language with people, but, I mean, you have to learn this stuff about, not just, this isn't a pension like CalPERS, you know, they're, how they would market to state government workers would be, should be very different, because of the nature of these professions. Categories? The phrases?
Yeah, the phrases.
Oh, our research staff, along with the marketing firm that we use, we've had a marketing firm assist us in this for many, many years. We're always digging in on stuff and doing focus groups and everything. So anyway, I thought you'd appreciate that.
That's really interesting, Jack. I love that.
Okay.
Great.
That's it.
Okay, any questions for Jack? Dana?
So just kind of piggyback on the demographic study in the survey. I just shared with Jack and Grant, and I'm going to be speaking with Elisa about a presentation I saw this summer, and a state, I can't remember which state it was, went into a really deep dive of their membership and did some analytic research, and, you know, we usually talk about our demographics as being early career, mid-career, and late career, and when they got their information back, they were actually finding that whoever made monetary decisions in the household made a huge difference on the messaging that the retirement system went with. And so if you were single and had a household, you paid attention to the things that the pension system was putting out, but if you were married and you didn't make the monetary decisions, but you were the member, you didn't pay attention to anything that came out from the pension system. And so they ended up having seven demographic groups, so I think it's, it'll be interesting to see if Elisa finds any validity to the information that, you know, I'm sharing with her, and Jack, I know, because you like data, you'll take a look at it, but it was a really fascinating presentation, and that might be something that we can look forward to.
Especially the decision-maker issue is very important, and remember, we're so, again, remember how unusual we are, 72% female is our membership, and I can't remember if I shared to you this statistic that Fidelity now uses in their presentations, but nine out of 10 women at some point in their life will be the decision-maker for finances in their family, either because of aging, mortality, all those issues. Nine out of 10 women will at some point be the primary decision-maker. So when you think of our responsibility here and the nature of this membership, it's very unique, what we have here. Very unique.
And that was one of the groupings, that the male in the family was the member, but they didn't make monetary decisions, it was the woman.
Uh-huh.
And so the messages that got sent to the man were targeted for the woman. So it was really fascinating. I just have one other question on your report, Jack?
Yes.
And it's probably not necessarily to you, and I don't know if we've ever talked about it, and if we have, it's just kind of slipped my mind.
Yes.
But we're a purchaser of green bonds. Can we purchase our own?
Yes, yes. It's in our green, it's in the annual report that the investment staff does for the Green Task Force. Yes, we're a large purchaser.
No, can we purchase the ones we're putting out for our building?
Oh, I think not, but, but you know what? I will call New York State Teachers up, because I don't think they...
Tell them to buy it?
I don't think they've bought any green bonds yet. I'm going to get them. I'm going to get Tom Lee.
You have to have some green financing, you know, get on with it.
Exactly. We'll call all the, we'll call Texas Teachers and New York Teachers.
And I never thought about it in our whole conversation about the bonds until I read your little ditty on it.
Chris, we're going to add something.
If you want me to answer, Chris Salman, Chief Investment Officer. The bonds are tax-exempt, so as a tax-exempt entity, none of the pension plans would want to buy these. It's more for high-net worth.
So much for New York, Jack.
Boom. Fun sucker.
Okay.
Well, that's a, that's a crowd downer.